You have yours in your...
I only have two of them.
One might have two packets and you give me the other one.
Okay.
And that's the one that has extra.
Okay, I'll give you the extra one. That's extra copies?
Yes.
Okay, time is now seven oh... Seven oh two. I'm gonna call the Dunbar and Board of Selectmen meeting to order for this week. And... The first thing, you got the date?
I didn't change it.
It's November second.
November second.
Twenty seventeen. It's okay.
I have it saved as the second.
You have minutes from last week.
You know, I've got a... Senator's present.
I am. Just getting my stuff open up. Okay, we have three, all three selecting present. We have the town minister present. We have the recording secretary present. We have Leo Martin. Recording for the town of Dunbar. As a private citizen and as an issue, not an official position. Welcome, Leo.
Welcome, brother.
I did. It's okay. Okay, now we can go right to old business. We have some minutes.
Yeah, you make a motion to approve the minutes of the, obviously, October twenty-sixth meeting.
October twenty-sixth meeting, yes.
I've read them, but I'm gonna stand because I wasn't there, so I'll let you.
Okay, I'll second that. And all, any further discussion on the minutes, Bob?
No, I mean, everything was changed, so I've read the proper...
Yeah, I saw that. I tried to make a change and I was corrected. There's two organizations that Don represented that evening. And so, my change was corrected. All right, all favor? I went up there. Just give us two corners signed.
Very nice signature, Corin.
Seventy-six.
Very nice signature.
I'm trying to get shot, you're working guys.
All right, I'm gonna open up for a public comment first. We have the, Leo, do you have anything for the group?
No, thank you.
Chief, welcome. Nothing. You look clean cut tonight?
Oh, thank you.
You had to take a double take when you walked in?
Yeah, I want to speak to the others.
Were you able to collect, actually collect, uh, anything as far as donations for your expedition?
I don't know.
Okay.
Kind of be directly to the, yeah, the citizens.
Very good. Maybe you have anything for the public?
Um, I was just here to see if there's any update on the farm situation across the street from my house.
In fact, in fact, there is, but the thing is, we're gonna announce, we have the investigation, we're wrapping up the investigation now. There's a few more reports coming in. We, last week, we decided we're gonna have a meeting next Thursday, and all the butters will be invited.
Yep, yep.
Include a presentation by the, by the initiative, the project manager.
Yeah, yep. Yep.
Okay, so it should be an interesting meeting next week. And so, spread the word.
I'm gonna get a babysitter for that one.
Did you, do you talk to Paul at all?
I don't talk to Paul. I saw him parked across the street from my house yesterday, but I was sick and I didn't wanna go out and bug him.
Okay.
I've never really officially met him, so I didn't...
I get regular phone calls from the residents on Meadow Lane. You happen to be the one across the street from the...
Yeah, on Three-Eleven, Scott and Conover.
The timber cut or the logging road.
Yes.
And then Paul...
Their farm stand.
Yeah.
Which, by the way, I called DOT and they didn't do it again last week. I don't know what the result of the DOT phone call was.
But we have, we have some interesting information, but we wanna present it as a group, and we're just wrapping some things up now. There's a few things that we're still pending, just we wanna get, uh, complete as we can.
Okay.
But I think is, uh, so, we welcome you to return. And spread the word to your, for any of you.
Yeah, I would definitely let all of them know, because they're all curious.
Can you give me your email and I'll...
Absolutely.
I'll send you an email, because I do send, communicate via email for Paul.
Mm-hmm.
And then I'll just make sure I add you to the list.
Okay.
He's been nice enough to, you know, communicate to the ones that are interested in the project. On the outcome.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I'm interested.
I need your state or name for Corin.
Okay.
You have it?
Yeah, I had it ready, yeah.
Okay, excellent.
Crystal.
Crystal?
Yes.
Okay.
Crystal, how do you pronounce your last name?
Dwyane Hart.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, don't wanna mess it up. Crystal's five. Okay, thank you, but the thing is, but I expect to see you here next weekend, yes?
I will be here.
Okay, before we get on with the meeting, I wanna give a shout out to the police department, the fire department, especially the fire department. Uh, because they were out there on the windstorm at midnight, starting to clear roads in Dunbar. And they worked until, how many hours in the wee morning?
They ran themselves ragged all night, all the next day, and for them, the calls hadn't stopped coming. They were, it was just house issues that they had, and now that they've been hit with some, some medicals. Every night they've had something, including, uh, including just a short time ago, they had some more wires on the, a lot, trees on the lines. So, they, they've had a very, very busy week.
So, kudos to our fire department, kudos to the police department for assist. Okay, and unfortunately, I also heard this week, we had another incident at thirteen, and...
Yeah, down with the intersection.
Into the intersection's corner.
Yeah, and the news is nobody got hurt very badly down there.
True, but it's, uh, it should add to the stack of stuff we got.
It was a right-of-way issue, it appears.
Understood, which is, which is, it is always, anyone confused, that's a confusing corner. Still, it's, if I do anything, that's one thing I'd like to address for this day. Okay, but thank you. But again, to fire department, kudos to the fire department. Okay, the first thing we have, we're gonna talk about tonight, is the, uh, the calendar for twenty-eighteen budget. And I'm gonna let Lean take the lead on this one.
Okay, I didn't get as far as I would have liked to, to start the packet that you'll be working with for the preparation of town meeting. In front of you, you have the two thousand seventeen eighteen calendar. We have eighteen board of selectmen meetings, tentatively to discuss and/or work on a two thousand eighteen budget before town meeting. The petition warrant articles will be due, um, no later than the sixth of February. So typically, the goal is to have a public hearing on the eighth of February. Not before the petition warrant articles, because if there's any money warrant articles, you have to have a second public hearing, which is required with the two weeks' notice. So the eighth of February would be the goal for a public hearing.
Okay.
So there'll be a lot of, um, you know, juggling between town report, um...
Do you have a second copy of that, or did you give me, I think I may have shortchanged myself.
Did you look at the folder?
Yeah.
The calendar?
Oh, hang on.
No, 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 that's not it.
Yeah, it was in my budget folder.
Okay, I need that. Thank you. Sorry, Bob.
It's okay. Are you sure?
I hear you. Twenty-eight.
Yeah, so the board will have to, um, potentially come up with a, a strategy meeting. Whether you invite the, the departments to listen in on your discussion. Uh, now, next week, we have a little bit to discuss in the beginning. Uh, that topic of strategy meeting shouldn't take long if you wanted to invite the departments in, just so that they can hear your presentation, or via memo to them. So that will start evolving. It looks like all the holidays are not going to interfere with our Thursday night meeting, so that's a good thing.
Not even Thanksgiving?
Oh, you're right, the twenty-third, I'm sorry. We are not meeting on the twenty-third.
Thank you.
So that means we have, we're down to seventeen meetings.
In December?
November.
I don't mind coming in, but I'll probably fall asleep.
Turkey night? So now, between now and the town meeting.
So we're talking about, we could have a strategy meeting either the ninth of, next week, or the sixteenth. I think ninth may be an interesting meeting, so I don't really wanna take away from that meeting there.
Okay. Sixteen? And then send out a memo to the departments for a strategy meeting?
The department chiefs, they can come in and...
I, I'll be putting my, um, budget, my new system budget together, which enables me to disperse the departments, their two thousand eighteen budget, to use as a tool or worksheet for their presenting numbers.
Okay.
So I can send out a memo. Strategy meeting.
And then we can front-load that, so they can, we can discuss that right up in front of the meeting.
Okay.
Is that all right, gentlemen? Yep, okay.
Okay. Um, I also included in your packet for today, something that you should consider, because we'll also be discussing warrant articles. Typically, in the past, the board has always worked to include capital reserve funds, some sort of deposit into those funds. I can give you, uh, I'll give you the list of what we presented last year. This is just the report of the trustee of the trust funds and the right-hand column balance. This was printed, uh, just recently, it was in, like, a month ago, October fifth. So this is a very up-to-date capital reserve fund balance. The right above them shows you, um, what the funds is used for. Fifth one down approximately, for example, says revaluation of reserve. We have fifty-one thousand nine eighty-two every year, for the last couple of years, we've been putting ten thousand dollars. We bumped it up to fourteen thousand, because we anticipate a, um, a revow in twenty-twenty. And we need to have X amount of dollars in that fund for that.
Can you take some out? What amount are you talking?
I, I wanna say back in the day, they estimated around seventy to eighty thousand dollars. But that was earlier on, so they always have to have, be prepared for a reserve for...
Okay.
And then on the other pages, you see the highway capital reserve, the kitchen fund, um...
You said you're gonna give us suggested amounts?
Yeah, well, um, I'll give you what we deposited last year and prior years. And I know that Bob had made a recommendation to, uh, the board, um, that in times of, um, difficulties for the taxpayers, it's always important that the board look at the amounts that we would deposit into the capital reserve, because each one of those warrants that passes is an impact to the taxpayer.
Yeah, I've always seen at town meetings, people come up and try to halve it, or, you know, they always try to reduce it. I've seen that for, like, eight years now. You know, they think it's too much, so they're...
So, for example, Dave, the fire department equipment is an engine, and it's a large number. The, his goal on the capital improvement plan would be to put in, like, forty thousand or more annually. In the past, the boards have chosen to maybe put a little bit less, and then increase the deposit at another time, when there's, when the economy's not hurting as much, but...
So we don't have to go back and look at last year's folks who are gonna give us those totals?
These are what they currently have in their capital reserve, so, um, they, typically, the departments will come before the board and present their warrant articles, and what they would like to, um, add into that department. Highway department, transportation, fire department. So that, and if you decide you wanna keep your paperwork in your folder in the back, in the office, all your paperwork will be together. But I will have the budget report.
That's a good idea, so it's a little bit, so you can add some...
Yeah, and then, uh, we can always go back to it.
So it takes a moment.
I can put your name on it?
Yes.
So I will have more budget-related items ready for you next week.
Okay.
It's just been a little bit hectic this week.
See, it's not so. All right, I'm glad we have a sense of humor. Okay, uh, we're gonna move on. Anything else for the budget, Lean, or we're good?
No, I have things just to bring you up to speed on that are work in progress. Would you like me to just go through that?
Uh, general town business, we're gonna move into, um, Corin. And this is, uh, she, the town minister's gonna give you some update on some of her projects. We have her chat, but, go ahead, Lean.
Um, just for the record, the butters were installed at the library. I've been told that they look really good. Um, I'm getting a second quote on, from another carpenter for the door, and there's one out there that's coming back with some information. So hopefully, we'll have two quotes for the door shortly here. For the board's information, last week, the board asked the road agent to temporarily store the steel that was in the parking lot in behind the, um, in the highway garage, to, you know, avoid any injury to the trick-or-treaters. That he promptly took care of that the following morning, so that was taken care of.
Kudos to him. It was a well-moved, well-before-halloween, it was great.
Yeah, yeah, he did a, he didn't, um, clinch on that. I have met with one person who's gonna give us a quote for the stone in the back, and I have two others, which the cemetery trustee asked me to reach out to the current lawn care person. And then I have the third lawn care person that'll be reaching out to try to get quotes on the stonework that we'd like to get in the back, so that's...
For what they were on previous week?
Good idea, yes. It shouldn't be along, at least from the two of them.
That was the previous meeting, but they, they approved paying for that portion of the...
Right, right.
But they wanted to see the quotes and what the work was gonna involve, so...
And the description of the work should be in a letter to them, eventually.
Yeah, yeah.
That was one of the things they asked.
I just need to get the quotes in.
Yep.
And then, um, last week, you were, did we discuss the score construction last week?
Yeah, we asked that you reached out to the attorney.
I wasn't sure if Dave was here at that time, so I did, um, send an email to the town attorney, passing on the request of the board, that we would like to know what our next options are.
What's the last correspondence we had with them?
Um, I, I sent it to the, it's October nineteenth, and there was no response. And then before that was, um, October eleventh. Uh, actually, he was here on the tenth of October, scheduled a meeting for the eleventh with Cohen Steel, and there were no show. And I, um, forwarded, I inquired with the president of that company, did not respond. And then when I asked him on the nineteenth to remove the steel, he did not respond, so I'm not...
Sure was what, they, they said not to attend the meeting, they would always give instructions?
I picked up the phone and called the, because I, the site supervisor, this is the third one, Chuck. And he, he was, he told me, I asked him, um, I said, "You guys didn't show up for the meeting today." And he said, "I was told not to go," and I asked him if he was still working on the project. And he says, "Well, not really," and that, he looked at that and didn't wanna give me any more information, so...
So I think that that...
Did you make all the notes of that?
Mm-hmm, yep, yep.
We're gonna have to have some formal listed notes.
Right. You should chat with the attorney, right.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure we have those dates down, higher of all the times we met and called, and so...
Even you reached out to him along the way?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
And I came in to cover you for the one meeting that never showed up that day, so...
So if I need to look back at my calendar, or I just wanna get a good detail of all the times we reached out?
Okay, I'll send you what I have, and then maybe you can plug in your date that you made phone calls.
Okay. Great. Anything else?
Back of my call log and find that, I think.
Anything else, Hotley?
Um, no, that was it.
Okay. All right.
Oh, can I just add one more thing? I did attend the school board meeting last night. I had proposed a, um, um, the RSA, um, for budgeting. Did I, I gave you a copy of that, Dave? What's the RSA called? I'll give it in my office, I need to bring it with me. Chapter thirty-two.
RSA thirty-two.
And it's municipal budgeting, is that what it's called?
Municipal Budget Law.
Okay.
Thirty-two colon five.
So I presented that to the board last night. I explained to them that the, um, section A is what they are currently practicing, but have never formally adopted. And then section B is the one that I, um, asked them to include in, I actually asked them to include both. One, to, um, officially adopt the section A, and then B, to include the tax rate of the budget and the, um, special warrants on their...
Impact of the tax, onto the tax rate.
Yeah, but to include it in their warrant for two thousand eighteen. And they said that they would take it under advisement, so I'll wait to hear from them, and we'll read their minutes and see where they're going with that.
Okay, thank you. The next thing I wanna talk about is, and I'm gonna go to the inbox now, Corin. Tell me when you're ready. That's okay.
I can, I'll send that to you, Corin.
Okay, thank you.
We have the, um, updated quotes for the Health Trust. And the good news is that some of the prices went down, but we have to decide how, what we're gonna implement as far as, um, health care plan for the town. And I think this should be part of the budget meeting, or do you wanna have a separate time to discuss it? And I open up to my colleagues here, how do you wanna, how do you wanna handle this one?
I think we should do that at a separate meeting if we can, beat it out of the way before they meet.
Okay, could we, um, it'd be nice to have her as a, as a, for maybe an hour of time, is that possible?
I think, giving you the numbers that I got on the summary sheet that she gave to me, email, I'll put them on the spreadsheet as I did last year.
All right.
And I'll give it to you early enough, so that if next week, we end up at eight o'clock, I mean, it's not...
Maybe next week, we can discuss it, it'll be before the budget meeting.
Do we need to read that whole packet?
I think we do.
For the budget?
This would be, with the spreadsheet, with this, with the spreadsheet would be good.
You want me to, so I'll have to scan that to you?
Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate. Now, there's some stuff in here that really does not have to be scanned.
Yeah, the advertisements.
Exactly, all that advertisement, just the meat of the subject right here.
Okay.
So I'm gonna give that back to you.
Okay, so scan those to you.
And prepare the spreadsheet I gave you last year, in that way, we can, we can put that on an agenda for next week.
All right, so next week, yes.
Did you forget to record tonight?
I did, right here. How are you doing?
Yeah, better put it on.
I was looking around.
We, um, we do have, fortunately, a...
We have the video.
Yeah. They've, they've fallen back on me at different times, so this is a good thing.
I didn't even notice.
We have backup.
Just in case you're wondering why I was looking around.
Something's over there, miss.
All right, so audio was turned on at what time?
Seven twenty-four.
Seven twenty-four, so, yeah.
So next week, we'll put that on the agenda, the discussion of the health plans.
Yeah.
And with appropriate spreadsheet, we can probably discuss it. And we'll have the stuff ahead of time, so we can read it before we get into the meeting.
Yep.
And not go into the summary. Okay.
If time looks like it's giving time, we should, yeah.
We always have a separate time, but I can get it before the vice chair.
Put that down at the end of the meeting next week, and then if it looks like we're not gonna have enough time, we'll bump it to the sixteen.
Yeah, be the last item on the agenda.
Yeah.
I can agree with that. Okay, um, I guess got a concern, a follow-up concern from, uh, neighbors on Hocknington Road, I just, some neighbors having some issues. I, uh, I shared the email with my colleagues. I'm still working the issue. I did talk to the chief, thank you, chief, for the input. I'm just trying to get in touch with the people and things, I think your email, the communication's probably early in the week. I'm gonna pursue that, again, early next week. But I've had no response to my, uh, return. Responses to them, I have no responses, I'm trying to get a time up where we can speak together. Okay, in the inbox, we have, for information only, um, I went to the school, uh, school board, uh, public session. I think it's interesting, they had, they contacted an engineering outfit, and they made some changes to, um, the plans. It's interesting talking, but I think it's, uh, I have this for information only. We're getting hit, at least in the office, I was told, people are asking about our taxes going up. And, uh, and just, I think it's, it's important to make sure that people, voters know that it's, that we have one half, or one-third, and two-thirds go to the school board. They, to be, they have to be interested and participate in the process, in order to know what's going on here. So, uh...
So on the ninth, on the ninth, they're doing another...
The workshop?
Budget work session, yeah.
Yeah, and I did post that on Hot Topics.
All right. And so, out of courtesy.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And that's for the proposed renovations of the school?
Yeah. And I thought the, uh, the plan sounds interesting, in the sense that they, uh, there's a lot of stuff going wrong with the school, from the HVAC to, uh, not having enough space, and, um, even when they show children in the hallways, uh, trying to learn. It's kind of a, kind of a sad situation they, they display. But it needs some scrutiny by the voters. Okay, continuing on. I have a request from the, um, email from Jason Dubrow. He's asking for a replacement as a trustee of the trust and members.
How are we gonna reach out to Republic to try and get a replacement?
I typically would put it up on the, on the Hot Topics website, so... He had mentioned that he thought he was up for the end of his term and not gonna run in, in March, but he actually just got re-elected for three years. So he said he'd be willing to stay on until we find a replacement, so I think the best place to start is put it up on the website.
Talk with Gary. Now, how would that work? Since he's, he's an elected position, would we fill the vacant seat? Or we'd go for election again, special election?
I'd have to check with Linda on that one, because some of them are different. Some of them, they run, they, you fill them for the entire term, the remainder of the term. Others is just till March, and then they run again, so I don't know, I can ask Linda.
Let's, let's just, Linda would definitely be a source of knowledge for that.
So before, I guess I'll get that information before I put it up on Hot Topics.
Exactly. Because it'd be interim, you know, if it's only for three months, and they realize that they run again, some of them have to run against that. Okay, this was an FYI, this is just from the transfer station, it's, um, there's some market prices on, um...
Holling?
Yeah, not in Holling, on, um, what we're getting paid on Holling, or...
Little bit more showing us the market direction.
Yeah.
Well, it's getting cheaper.
This is FYI.
What is that, um, home?
It's actually, N-N-R-A pricing, price guide for members, or...
It's a price for tenants.
We're like, yeah.
Yeah.
But this is all for the transfer station, Corin?
Right, yeah. In fact, I can pass out the core, and so she can see that. Okay. There you go.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna open it back up, for, my inbox is pretty empty right now.
Did you wanna touch on the, um, workshop you're gonna be having for the interviewing of the new employee?
Oh, yeah, we, we did announce last week. We showed there are packets, uh, for the zoning and planning board. Uh, we, we have six candidates. I've invited the stakeholders to participate, us three, the three selectmen, and the two other key stakeholders, the zoning board chair and the planning board chair, to participate in the selection process.
So you'll have to announce it properly, because we're all gonna be there.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah.
And what date was that meeting scheduled?
We wanted to get your schedule. I'm not gonna do it next week, I'm gonna do it the week after next. And it's gonna be probably in the afternoon, and I wanna make sure you have enough notice where you could make it, so I need, you're the, uh...
Pivotal point. So we're talking the week of the thirteenth?
Yes.
Yeah, we've already gotten a response from, um, Ken Swayze, chairman of the planning board. He said he's busy all next week, but the following week, he's free, so...
So at the, Bob and I, fourteenth in the afternoon, are you guys available?
Uh, you can...
Is it Tuesday?
Fourteenth, Bob, Tuesday?
Tuesdays in the afternoon.
Yeah, the afternoon would work. What time you wanna make it, two?
Two or three? I hope we don't go fairly late, huh, John? Can we do it, can we do it Wednesday? Is Wednesday okay?
What's on the agenda?
It's a planning board meeting that evening, but Wednesday afternoon is open.
I should be able to do it in the evening.
No, not in the early...
Yeah, like afternoon.
Okay.
Three PM on the fifteenth, yeah, about. That would be good.
Can we make it two PM?
Yeah.
If we call candidates in?
Whatever.
Yeah, because we wanna make sure we have enough time for candidates, if we're gonna talk candidates, to candidates that evening.
But I don't think you're gonna be ready to interview them, I think we, you're probably gonna just, unless you...
Get a list of questions together first with them and meet first?
Well, the thing is, six candidates, the thing is, what I'm thinking, I'm thinking out loud here, why don't we narrow it down to, we're gonna look at the packets ahead of time, narrow it down to three or four people you wanna interview, and we just get the top three or four, and we'll bring those people in.
From, from past years, the interview process went an hour apart, just so that you didn't have someone waiting, and one of the interviewees going a little bit longer than what might take twenty minutes or so.
You wait.
And even have things overlapping, so I thought, I...
But like you said, is everybody gonna meet, like, for the first hour, without any candidates, or from to discuss their question?
We could just be, we could do that.
So in other words, start the meeting at two, and have nobody come in till three.
Okay.
So if that's the case, Wednesday won't be good.
I don't think so, because it's gonna go too late.
It's gonna go too late.
It depends how many candidates, we have six candidates, that would be six hours, but I'm saying, narrow it down to...
So you, you want the workshop to be just a discussion of who we, the candidates, and we don't...
That would be better, I think, and then do another hour. I think, and actually, you could select, uh, the, whichever people are gonna do the interviewing.
Yeah.
Because we can come up with the questions.
Yeah.
And we can review the packets. So we'll meet it to...
Or, or, yeah.
Two PM Wednesday the fifteenth, because I have to give them notice too, and then schedule, um...
Yes, so the following week, we'll bring the...
So, uh, figure it'd be an hour, should be, we should be able to handle all within an hour?
Oh, for, for the initial, yes.
Could we, should be able to grade what the candidates, where they would be in position of, uh, you know, their qualifications?
Yeah.
And if everybody has the same consensus, kind of makes it easier.
And then go ahead and schedule those for interviews, and, and do it before the board, and, um, the other two stakeholders, if they're, if they wanna participate in that.
Yeah.
Which I'm sure they will, at least Ken wants to.
Ken wants to.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a plan, so it'll be fifteenth, uh, two to three, um, tentatively.
Yeah.
And we can make it later that afternoon if we have to.
Okay, so I'll...
So if you've got something going on, just let us know.
And I'll send, I'll inform, Ken said he'd be available anytime, just with advance notice, so...
That works for me, okay.
Okay, and you'll let John know?
Yeah.
And if you can just send us an email, just so I have a catch twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause you're getting copies of this anyways, correct?
Yeah, everyone has a packet of all the copies of the, um...
So even if John can't make it, at least he can provide a hand on everything.
Correct, yeah, yeah. I may have to go deliver it to his house, but that's okay, it's not too far.
But it, it can be written input, or he can call you and discuss, and he can transcribe what he, what he, what his thoughts were. We can bring that to the meeting. And, uh, Lean, you're a key stakeholder too.
Okay.
Okay, so you're invited to the meeting also, because you're, as town administrator, I think you should be there. She, there's a general force to her. Okay, uh, am I missing anything else? Town business, general, am I missing anything before I open up the public again? I'm gonna go to you now, did I miss anything, town business?
I don't think I, I think I covered it all.
Okay. I'm gonna open it up, clear it up. Okay. Woody, eight?
Okay, are you gonna go to the selectmen later in the meeting?
Yeah, I wanna, I can come back to the selectmen now.
Go back to the selectmen now, okay.
Okay, I bring it back, back to the selectmen, and I'm gonna go to, uh, for, uh, Dave first.
Uh, the only thing I have is, I went to the town forest committee meeting, um, last night, and Jeff called me and gave me a heads up to let me know that they were having their meeting, and it was in reference to discuss the trees in the town common. And, um, appreciate Jeff calling me, 'cause I got back and haven't looked at the calendar yet, so... Um, I met with them last night, I think Woody was there at the meeting, and, uh, we talked about replacing the trees with a hardier maples, uh, hardier sugar-type maple that they put in previously. And, um, they seem to be open to, uh, the purchase of two trees, and Jeff is gonna look into the guy that did the last section of trees for us. And it looks like something that we're gonna look to do in the springtime.
That's on the forest side, near the John Stark's, I mean...
Yeah, um, we talked about two trees, and the location hadn't been hard determined, because we wanted to make sure there was enough room to stay away from the salt in the road and the wire, so that they didn't have to be one-sided, so... Um, so locations yet to be determined, but they seemed open to it, and, uh, you know, pretty much got the thumbs up, and they're gonna look into it. And I think, did you get any information back, Woody, as far as the, uh...
He's, uh, talking with the people at the nursery.
Okay, so they're checking with the nurseries to see how much the trees would be in the size, and they wanna, you know, maybe get to a four or five-inch caliber, a decent-sized tree, so that, you know, we're not waiting fifteen years to have it grow from a little root.
Okay.
See? Yeah.
Okay.
So that went well, so that's, uh, the first thing. And the only other thing is, uh, while I was on vacation in Wyoming, uh, Steve had called about his exit interview, and I didn't know if anything ever got addressed about that. Did we ever send him any exit interview paperwork?
I did, and he returned it.
Oh, he did, while I was gone?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I had, those two items.
Okay, thank you. Bob, to you, you're all set? I'm gonna go to Corinne, do you have anything?
I'm still...
Okay, Lean, do you have anything for the group?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna, uh, basically, I'm gonna make a, um, basically, uh, go into a non-public session at this point for RSA ninety-one alpha colon three, Roman number two alpha. I'm gonna, uh, go ask that we, uh, consider, that we go into non-public. And I need a vote from, uh, second, individual vote from everybody.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'm gonna, Kaminsky, yes?